Ready?
Yep.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this school board meeting for Independent School District 624. I would ask the clerk to please read the roll.
Arcand.
Here.
Beloit.
Here.
Chapman.
Here.
Ellison, here. Mullen.
Here.
Newmaster.
Here.
Thompson, absent.
All right, please all stand if you can and remove your hats and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we have an agenda before us. As we move into the meeting, I would ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
移到 So moved.
There's been a motion by Ms. Beloit. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Newmaster. All those in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, and we do have an agenda. We also have before us a consent agenda, and these are our sundry items that we take up from month to month, and the one thing that we're, as a board, very thankful for is the generosity of the community back into the schools, and this month is no different. We have several donations that are in the board packet, and just very much want to bring attention to the fact of the community's generosity and thank them very much. With that, I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda. A second.
Second.
A second by Mr. Chapman. With this, we need to have a-
Aye.
Beloit.
Aye.
Chapman.
Aye.
Ellison, aye. Mullen.
Aye.
Newmaster.
Aye.
All right, and we have a consent agenda on the floor. It is now time of our meeting for public forum. We ask that all the speakers keep their comments to three minutes as they address the board. Speakers must reside in the district, be a garden or of a student in the district. We will now move into our next informational item, C2, which is the art, culture, and education study. Is this-
Mr. Wald.
Mr. Wald, thank you.
Good evening, Chair Mullen, members of the board. Dr. Kazmercheck. Over a year ago, we began participating in a study with the city of White Bear Lake, Hanifel Performing Arts Center, and the White Bear Center for the Arts to explore the possibility of an arts district on the west side, downtown west of Highway 61. That committee has completed, the team has completed its work. It was facilitated by HKGI planners, and Rita Trapp, who was the lead facilitator for the project, is here to share the findings with us tonight. I do want to point out that this was a study, and so what you're seeing today is not a proposal, it's just the findings of the study. Rita Trapp.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
All right, good evening. It's a pleasure to be in front of you this evening. As I was introduced, I'm Rita Trapp. I'm a planner with HKGI, and I am pleased to share with you the findings of this study. The study purpose was that it came together to try and explore potential improvements as well as development or redevelopment opportunities around the areas of arts, culture, and education. It came together because a few of the organizations talked to the city of White Bear Lake and said, "We know there's a lot of activity happening in this neighborhood. It would be nice if we got together and talked about what our plans are and what that can mean, and has we moved forward with our plans individually. Are there things that we can think about or do that would really benefit the creation of an arts district that's really integrated within the residential district?" As was mentioned, the study partners included a number of entities: the White Bear Center for the Arts, Lakeshore Players Theater, children's performing arts, both under the umbrella of Hanifel Performing Arts Center, the city of White Bear Lake, yourselves, and then Ramsey County as part of their Bruce Vento Trail and their Rush Line. So again, the purpose was to bring all the staff together to understand what were the missions, the values, the plans, and then identify ways that we could add and enhance the district to build on what was already coming together organically. This is a slide that has all of the common values that were identified. The partner organizations really are focused on creating a welcoming, diverse, equitable, and inclusive community. They're thinking about trying to create a framework in order to collaborate and continue to work together as it makes sense to really serve the neighborhood and all of their initiatives. There is the idea of giving back to the community, also the idea of looking to complement and not necessarily compete with downtown, and so there are some ideas and strategies on that effort. The idea of improving connectivity and accessibility you'll see is very prevalent through all of the ideas, and so I'll walk through those together with you. And then we really want to look at how do we integrate arts and culture and education, weave those in in a way that you can actually visually see in the area. It's not just about going to one of the partner organizations. We started with just the existing conditions, so obviously the improvements that you are planning over the next several years was foundational, as are the plans for White Bear Center for the Arts, Lakeshore Players Theater, the idea of recognizing where the future station for Rush Line is being proposed, how the Bruce Vento Trail may move through this area, and then there's also a city-owned wetland area on the north side of the White Bear Center for the Arts campus. In looking at pedestrian circulation, we really tried to focus on identifying some of the considerations. Obviously, connection to downtown and the transversing of Highway 61 is very important and still continues to be a topic that everyone brings up as we talk about the study findings. The idea of connecting the campus partners, right now, at the start of the study, that was the first time kind of some of the partners had been talking to each other about what their plans were, and so the idea of how do we connect the different campuses together and really build synergy with those relationships. And then the connections to the adjacent neighborhoods. As we looked at vehicular circulation, there's a little bit more issues that came up. Some of it has to do with vehicle congestion around the school as well as for White Bear Center for the Arts and Lakeshore Players. Obviously, when they have events, there's also a lot of traffic that exits all at the same time, and how do we move cars through that area as well? And then the potential roadway modifications at Seventh and Eighth as it relates to the Rush Line corridor. So we really looked at those as kind of foundational starting elements, things that were probably going to happen, and so what do we do to enhance it? What are some things that should be thought about as every entity continues to move forward with their plans? We grouped the potential strategies or the ideas into four groups. Network and circulation is the idea of what are the physical improvements that could be done to improve circulation through the neighborhood. Placemaking is the idea of how do we create that sense of you are here, you are in an arts district, you are in a place that values arts and education and culture. What can the city do about land use and redevelopment to support these types of efforts? And then what is a potential organizational framework? How could these entities continue to move forward, work together, in order to continue to build something that has already started organically? There are a lot of ideas, and I won't be able to dive into details about all of them with you tonight, so I probably will focus on the ones that are more specific to you. The other ones will be on the screen, and you can certainly look at them at your leisure, but I really want to focus on things that are relevant to you as the school district. So I'll probably spend more time on network and circulation and placemaking than on land use and organization, because some of those elements are really outside of what you might do on a significant basis. In terms of network and circulation, one of the identifying recommendations or thoughts is that really improving east-west connection for pedestrians through the campus would be helpful. Right now, the campus, while it's beautiful, it has a lot of elements. It doesn't necessarily support or enhance residents who live on the west side of the campus coming through to go to the White Bear Center for the Arts or to Lakeshore Players Theater. And obviously, the things that are happening for you upcoming will change some of that, but if we can do more to make it more prominent and inviting, that would be great. The connections to the Bruce Vento Trail are important, and then also the idea of mid-block crossings at Division and Baldigo. I know that there's a lot of traffic that'll happen during certain times of day, but other times of day it'll be less, and so trying to make sure it's clear where those safe movements are for folks so that they can move between the campuses. Focus on traffic calming along the north-south corridor. You've already talked about some of these elements, I'm sure, and the city will continue to look at these as well. Idea of curb extensions or bump outs, narrowing the roadway where it makes sense, things that really signify that you're in a pedestrian environment as opposed to necessarily one that's focused on vehicular traffic. And I should have mentioned, the pictures are just examples of precedents from other places where they've done these types of tools that may be relevant to consider in White Bear Lake. This one is a little less relevant to you about Long Avenue, but on the other side of the campuses, there is some discussion about what could happen on Long Avenue, so trying to provide that more pedestrian-friendly street. And then again, the idea of prioritizing pedestrian crossing with different elements. So again, we're encouraging students, patrons, different types of folks to move back and forth between the campus. And then again, this one probably is something that you're well familiar with but doesn't really be a focus for you, is the idea of continuity and connection on both sides of Highway 61. I know it's important from living in this area as well about crossing Highway 61 and the safety elements, but it continues to be on the radar as something that needs to be thought of and addressed, and as additional planning occurs, something that people continue to think about. And then wayfinding for the area. Obviously, they'll be important to do wayfinding, but it would be nice, it could be something that would be thought of on a district-wide basis instead of an individual-wide basis that again denotes that you are in an arts and culture and education district and then also helps to move people between the different areas. If we look at placemaking, again, placemaking is the idea of making sure that you know where you are and that you recognize you're in an arts district, and also visually gives you cues that you're in the area or you're going where you want to go. So some of the placemaking ideas is activating the parking lots or the streets or other in-between spaces for events and gathering spaces, using parking lots to link spaces together so you, again, you can see the fact that you're in the arts district and you're heading in the direction you want to go, and then trying to see if there's a possibility of closing or using Division or Long Avenue for special events when it needs to for any of the entities so that they can expand their space and really make it something that is across all of the campuses. And these are just some other ideas and examples of that. Also looking at art in the Rush Line Station, if it should be constructed. Also, as those spaces are thought of, one of the important elements that we have found in our work is that outlets, Wi-Fi station, movable furniture, things that will make events happen are also important. It's easy to create the space for the event, but sometimes those other amenities are also important to support. Then enhancing the streetscape along key corridors, pedestrian lighting, pavement, surfaces, seating, the types of elements that really make streetscape interesting and accessible to pedestrians, and also tends to slow down traffic as you know you're in a pedestrian environment, and so those are elements to consider as streetscape improvements are being proposed. This is an example of just one, this is Long Avenue, but this is what streetscape could look like to support events. Some elements that this kind of shows is the idea that the sidewalk is actually on the road instead of on a, up on the curb, which provides more usable space. The idea of some of the banners, the lighting, those elements that make it more inviting to, for the use of events, but also they will benefit pedestrians all over whenever they use the space. Creating public access to the wetland area, and this may be an opportunity for collaboration between your students, the city, and potentially White Bear Center for the Arts, but a way to actually more access the area and use it as a sounding, a place for art to be created. And then a district branding effort. Again, this might be something that could be a collaboration between the school district and the arts organization if it should move forward, but some kind of district branding so that you know you're in the White Bear Art District. And then an artist-in-residence program. I know White Bear Center for the Arts has done that, but there are other ways to use that program to really focus on placemaking. Land use and redevelopment, as I said, this is probably more focused on the city as opposed to the school district or the other entities, but just as an overview, this is really the idea of what can they do to really support flexibility for property owners to do different things? So how could we support more artists being in the neighborhood, galleries, kind of non-traditional uses that does integrate okay with the residential uses, but really kind of build hopefully that organic momentum in this area? So these are some of the examples of what the city could consider. Similarly, looking at reuse opportunities, so places that have traditionally been commercial storefronts or housing maybe could convert to other types of uses, live-work, artist spaces, and again, the city just needs to look at its codes to make sure that's possible. And there may be creative ways to use some of the larger right-of-way that actually is kind of in people's front yards. Not everybody has that, but there are some places. So how could we incorporate public art or public use of that space in a different way? And then trying to encourage mixed use and creative spaces, and again, this is for the city, to try and really support arts in a different way. And then the last strategy, rely, or focus on organizational framework, so what could be done so this has momentum and it continues to move forward? So things like an actual organization where everybody comes together and actually creates something that works collaboratively on certain elements. And there's a lot of different things that could contain, but that probably would be led by the arts organization in collaboration with the city, the chamber, business owners, downtown business. So again, this would be something that would need to be done on a larger scale. Looking at branding and social media to create excitement for the district, and then organizing one or more public events, which has already started to happen, but could continue, and then if there was an actual organization under that umbrella would help to really build momentum for something specific in this area. And then trying to connect downtown business resources to the area right now. Obviously, there are connections. There's a lot of energy in White Bear Lake, but the idea of how the artists and the downtown businesses work together to kind of enhance each other. And then funding and partnership opportunities. There are obviously sources of funding, but that's kind of the thing that happens once you have an organization or a specific project, so obviously that's something that needs to be, people need to be aware of as a next step as well. And then potentially creating a sub-district within the downtown district. This is the idea of, is it beneficial to name so that people know the different areas? But think of this as all downtown White Bear Lake as opposed to its own area, and obviously that hasn't been decided. That was just one of the things that was proposed as something to be thought about, is is it better to think of it as its own area, or is it better to think about it as part of a larger area, and maybe this is a sub-district as opposed to its own? And that's something that further conversation would be beneficial to focus on. So in terms of next steps, the study again was undertaken to facilitate conversation. It really was done at a grassroots level with the different organizations saying it's time for us to get together and understand what we're doing, what our plans are, to see how we can work together. These were simply ideas that were floated. Each organization is taking a look at those ideas, and we did have presentations with the arts organization, with the city council. There was a neighborhood meeting here last week. Thank you for hosting it for us. And then the presentation to yourselves, and that's to get the word out. There are no specific decisions or steps that have been identified. I know that the city is probably considering some of the land use parts of it. Hopefully, as they look at streetscape improvements or construction improvements, they will use this as a foundation. But we're hoping that this can be a springboard to start, to initiate further conversation and collaboration, and that there'll be an opportunity to implement some of the ideas that came forward from this study. So with that, I can answer any questions or clarify if there are any.
Thank you very much. Questions? Mr. Chapman.
Yeah, maybe you've already mentioned this, and if you have, I apologize, but who spearheaded or who first came with the idea for this study? Was it the city, or?
No.
I'm just curious where the momentum came from.
I kind of referenced it, but I wasn't really clear.
Uh huh.
So it came originally from two staff members, Lakeshore Players, children's performing arts. We're talking with each other and saying, huh, I hear that this is happening. I don't really know what's happening. Wouldn't it be nice if I could find out what was happening? They went to the city, and the city said, yeah, that would be really nice, and that's kind of what spurred the conversation, is that it would be nice if the groups could get together in the same room, have conversation about plans. So that's really where it started. I don't, when they first went to the city, this wasn't what they had in mind. They just went to the city to say, there's things happening. It would be nice if we could collaborate and communicate, and this is the outcome of it. And it took a number of months to really frame up what this was, if this was a study or something else. But it was something that was originally initiated by a couple of the arts organizations, wanting to know what was happening and seeing how they could be influential with it and collaborate with the other entities that were doing things in the area.
Go ahead, Ms. Chapman.
Just as a follow-up to that, then, is the city or somebody come forward to, I mean, obviously, there's going to have to be, so that this thing just doesn't, you know, die and get thrown up on a shelf and collect dust somewhere. Is someone, the city or the Center for the Arts, or somebody taking the lead on the discussions, ongoing discussions relative to this, and if so, who is that?
So at the city staff, Sam Crosby is the person that kind of is the person that one talks to about the study. How this will evolve, I don't think has been really clear. We are just finishing, you're the last presentation, to say, here's what we learned. Take some time to think about what you like, what you don't like, what should we move forward? How do we work forward on that? And I think the hope, my hope, is that there'll be a meeting of the staff or the partners to talk about what do we do next. Irregardless, I think the city is committed to using the information from this as foundation when they do upcoming studies that we know will happen. So the city, as far as I'm aware, was thinking about a downtown mobility study. This would be part of the information that they would use as foundational documents. The Rush Line currently is under RFP process to select consultants to work on stationary planning, so this would be something they would use to inform that part of the process. But at this point, because it is a study of the partners and there was no specific outcome, it's going to take each of the partners to think about it, think about the ideas, see how they fit with it, and where they would like to see it move forward.
Thank you. Thank you. Other questions or comments? Dr. Newmaster.
I just want to say it's good to see people looking at things before anything is determined or planned already, because I think then you see all the possibilities. And a lot of us have been to other cities or countries where they have a Riverwalk or a particular arts area, and even Minneapolis in northeast has their branded arts area. So I think it's a great idea to do. It's a huge bunch of things you've thrown together at the wall, and some of it will stick and create all kinds of good things, I think.
I hope so.
Thank you.
Always my goal working on a plan is that I hope it goes someplace, not just gets created and looks beautiful.
But you've got enough in there to take care of two cities.
Yes.
So.
Thank you.
That's great.
Thank you. Ms. Ellison?
Yeah, I just wanted, I'll jump on what Dr. Newmaster said, that it feels like a really unique opportunity, that it doesn't, doesn't strike me that there's a lot of suburban communities that have such a vibrant arts life, and especially so close together and so close to the high school. So it feels like a really great conversation and opportunity for the city. So, thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. We'll now move on to our next informational item, C3, which is the superintendent's report. Dr. Kazmercheck.
Thank you, Chair Mullen, members of the board. All right, the most current information about our mitigation strategies along with COVID-19 dashboard information is available directly at www.isd624.org/covid19. We're on the black header on all of our school and district pages. We recently secured 4,000 Binax Now Rapid Antigen COVID-19 tests from the state that will be offered while supplies last to secondary families when they have a symptomatic student. These tests were offered to elementary families recently as well. We have partnered with Bear Care and Cub Pharmacy to host voluntary COVID-19 vaccination clinics for White Bear Lake area school students ages five to 11. Messages were emailed to all elementary and middle school families. Copies of the messages with links to the vaccine clinics can be found on the COVID-19 page of the district website. Community members are invited to sign up to join us to honor Minnesota and our nation's veterans through a free event at Normandy Park. Instructor and photographer Jay Grammon will guide attendees around the state showcasing some of the veteran mules he has discovered through his travels. The program runs from 10:00 to 11:00 a.m. on Thursday, November 11th, at the Senior Center. The following musical, Into the Woods, will begin this week with performances at 7:00 p.m. on November 12th and 13th, and November 18th through, 18, 19, and 20, and a matinee performance at 2:00 p.m. on November 13th. And I'm excited to continue the periodic conversations with parents, grandparents, and district residents over a cup of coffee at our Coffee with Dr. K. events. Please mark your calendar and plan to join us for the informal conversational setting from 7:30 to 8:30 a.m. next Tuesday, November 16th, at Caribou Coffee in downtown White Bear Lake. And the following celebrations have been already or will soon be recognized in November. November's Native American Heritage Month, Veterans Day, National School Psychology Week, American Education Week, and Geography Awareness Week, Education Support Professionals Day, National Parent Involvement Day, and Thanksgiving Break. And finally, the district is hiring for a variety of positions, offering both school day and out-of-school time hours. Full and part-time position, positions are available. Check out the employment page of our district website and find ways you can join us as a bear. Additional information can be found at the district website, www.isd624.org. All right? That's it.
Thank you very much, Dr. Kazmercheck. We'll move into our first discussion item, which is D1, which is the update on the sale of the 2021 B Alternative Facilities Refunding Bonds. Mr. Wald.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Mullen, members of the board. In 2012, the district issued alternative facilities bonds for the purposes of improving HVAC improvements in district buildings. These bonds were eligible to be refinanced due to low interest, and they're eligible to be refinanced, but due to low interest rates especially, it seemed logical for us to do so. At your August 9th meeting, the board approved that administration could move forward with refinancing the bonds and to review proposals of prospective purchasers. Those bonds were sold on November 3rd, and a long superintendent and a board member could sign off on those bonds. One of the parameters that was set was that there'd be $150,000 at least in savings and 1.5% interest savings, and we've exceeded that in this sale. So Greg Crowe, our senior municipal advisor from Aylers, is with us tonight, and he'll provide a summary of the sale.
Thank you. Mr. Crowe?
Mr. Chair, board members, Dr. Kazmercheck, thank you for having me here tonight. It's nice to come and report on great results on refundings. We were having an internal discussion with our marketing department, which is one person that's not a massive operation, but they said, is there anything we could do for you? And I said, you know, it would be really fun when we come to these refunding meetings if we had one of those big check-printing machines so that we could print a big check for you to share with your taxpayers when you have the opportunity to refinance that and you do it successfully. And that's what's happened in this case, as Tim mentioned. We did take bids last week. You have a sale day report in front of you, and so tonight's action is to ratify the acceptance of those bids, because that meeting in August allowed the superintendent and board officer to accept the low bid if it met those parameters. So we did receive six bids last week, and the low bidder was Piper Sandler and Company. The bid that they offered was an interest rate of 0.33, or 3.4%, so about a third of a percent. And we really haven't seen rates this low, you know, probably in history. This, this time period in the last couple of months have seen some of the lowest rates ever for municipal bonds. So that worked out in your favor as we, as we offered up the, about $9 million worth of bonds to- of bonds to potential purchasers. There's some detailed charts. I'll just mention that the bid range, even the highest bid was about a half percent. So even the highest bid was a, was a nice low interest rate. If you look at the top of page two, the true interest cost of .34% is less than the .65 that we had estimated in August when Shelby was here, walking you through the bond issuance process and the potential savings. At that time, at that interest rate, the savings would have been about $235,000. Now, the savings we're estimating at almost $300,000, $286,000. So as a percentage of future debt service, that's about a 3% reduction. And the reduction will be seen first for taxes payable in 2023, for the, for the fiscal year 2023, '24. And your levy was a good, you know, there was not much adjustment that we needed to do for this year's levy. So in discussions with the administration, we focused all the savings on that page 23 year. And then we'll incorporate that into that kind of colorful master plan that we've shown you with the chart that shows all of your capital levies, future bond issues, and so on, to help manage that on and on, all of those levies on an ongoing basis as we do another round of bonding next spring to provide funds for financing the new projects. So again, this is savings to your taxpayers. It's not additional money to spend on the building project, but it will allow you to mitigate some of the tax impact from the building project going forward. There's a lot of detailed attachments that we don't need to go into, page by page or line by line, but listing the bids and the, and the detailed financial schedules and the detailed information about the savings. The last attachment is the rating report. Once again, S and P reviewed the district. We had a conference call. They affirmed your AA rating, or your, your AA minus rating, but they did assign a negative outlook. And what that means is that they are, they'll watch you closely in terms mostly of your financial performance. They're concerned about some of the deficit spending that's been happening. And having a negative outlook means that they'll, they'll take another look within the next 12 months. As I mentioned, we'll have another bond sale in the spring. So that's when, the next time, we'll, we'll talk with them, given that you won't have an audit or anything in a year end, and that, at that point, it may not make a difference for that call, but it will be something they'll be keeping an eye on over the next, next 12 months. So that's all the information in the sale day report, summary of the great results of the bidding for the bonds. As I mentioned, you've got an action item that ratifies the award of the bonds that was accomplished last week, because it did meet the parameters. So that's merely you saying, yes, we are affirming the acceptance of the low bid based on the parameter we set in August. Happy to answer any, answer any questions about the report or the resolution? If you ask me, ask me now, that'd be great. I actually, we also sold bonds for the Orno School District, so I'm going to duck out when we finish here and make my way diagonally across the metro down there. So they didn't get as good of an interest rate of you, as you, but their, their bond was a little bit longer. So anyway, any questions for me?
Questions regarding the bond sale?
So we'll take action on this later in the meeting. So if you do have questions, Greg won't be here for that part.
Yep.
You must have done a really good job, Greg.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
As usual.
All right. Thank you so much for your time tonight, and thank you again for the opportunity to work with the district. It's, it's exciting times here, and we love being a part of it. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Good night.
All right. We'll now move on to our next discussion item, which is the first reading of some school board policies. Just for the audience, so that everybody knows, policies become time to time in front of, they get, they get a revision, they get reviewed, and then they come in front of the school board for two, two readings. This is the first reading of Policy 503, Student Attendance, Policy 533, Wellness, Policy 541, Tutoring of Students, Policy 805, Waste Reduction and Recycling, and Policy 806, Crisis Management Policy. Are there any questions for any of these policies that are coming before for the first Dr. Newmaster?
Well, I looked at all of them and read them two, three times to make sure I got it. And I looked at the attendance one, and that's, you know, a really specific thing, and you guys did a great job. And the only question I had, and I was just looking here to see, when it talked to the list of activities that are not approved, and if you know offhand what page that is, I looked at.
For absences, is that what you're saying?
Hmm?
For absences that are approved?
Yeah. I'm just talking about the first one right now. And it had a list of, you know, things that were approved and things that were on the list of, oh, here it is, unexcused tardies. And the only one I was looking at, just to have a little more understanding, if they're talking about, an unexcused absence is like a family vacation, however, it's, if it's, it says if it's not approved by administration or something. So I assume that gives a little bit of flexibility, let's say someone is taking a significant trip for whatever reason. I think of the times that we visited Korea or something like that and took a couple of extra days at either end of spring break. So am I understanding there is a little bit of flexibility, but basically, no, you can't, you're trying, you need to try to fit vacations in whatever school vacation time there is? But there's some flexibility?
Is...
I guess, I don't know if I'm asking.
I know that you two are on the policy committee.
Dr. Newmaster? If, where I see it is unexcused absences, and it's number five, it's on page four, and it says vacations with family, personal trips to schools or colleges, and then in parentheses, it says if the student and parent or guardian have been warned of an attendance issue, or the absence has not been pre-approved by a school administrator. So it's in that parentheses that explains when it would be an unexcused absence. Is that the one you were referencing?
Yeah. And I, and I was looking at that, trying to understand. I understand if you have a student that has a variety of other issues, you wouldn't want to miss more school, but there may be a possibility of discussing it, getting work ahead, or whatever.
Yeah, absolutely. We have a process for families to get vacations pre-approved. Yep.
That was the only one that I wondered there, and should I go on and just mention the other one I had a question on?
Please. Yes, yes. Yes, Dr. Mullen.
Again, we all go back to our own personal experiences with our own kids, and I'm thinking of the part about tutoring, and that if someone is a teacher during the normal school day, they shouldn't be teaching outside of school. And is, is that new? Because I know that my kids took music lessons after school from a variety of music teachers, and that was our choice.
So Policy 541?
I believe that's the one on tutoring. Let's see. Yeah, 541.
Is there a, is there a reference that you, that you're concerned with?
Well, it just listed who should not be teaching students. So I can see where there's a, you don't want to have a mix of conflict of interest. But I also know that, in the past at least, whether it's our trumpet teachers or our band drum teachers, are you saying, does this say that you cannot have a Saturday lesson from a current teacher?
Doctor, is this, Mr. Mon?
I can, I can take that. So yes, in this case, if that is a student that that teacher currently works with, that would not be appropriate under the policy.
Hmm.
And I would say that that was clarified, however, that's not a change from previous policy.
Wouldn't that also apply then to not taking, let's say, a sports clinic for pay outside of school then, from someone who is a coach?
And I think what you're talking about there too, is that these are conversations that can still happen, that happening on a weekend, and certainly, we would expect that that would happen over the summer, for instance, that that kind of tutoring opportunity would be, would be possible. We want to make sure that it's not related to the course that the student's taking. So that's the point that we want to make there. If a student needs additional assistance in order to be successful in the course that they're currently enrolled in, we want to make sure that that's not a situation that creates a conflict of interest. And so it could very possibly be something, especially in most of those cases, individuals would be working with their own LLC, for instance. And so in those cases, it's clearly differentiated from the course that the student's enrolled in, and that's the kind of separation that we would look for to make sure that there's not a conflict of interest in those situations.
I'm just looking at it from the point of view of a mom of two professional musicians that went through this district. And we had some fine people that, you know, you do work with, some of them sometimes for four years, if it's a high school and it's the director. And you may do summer workshops or whatever. So you're saying they need to find another teacher?
What we'd be saying there is that we would expect a greater separation to exist. So for instance, we would expect that that relationship, although it may start in the classroom there in terms of how they meet the student, that they'd offer that not as a employee of the school district, that they would offer that instead as, for instance, a privately operating LLC, whether that would be through community ed, for instance, or just as a purely independent entity that they'd work through there. And for those where we want to make sure that there's a clear separation, that they'd be taking place at a time that's separate from when instruction takes place.
Right.
So not before or after the student contact day, for instance, when students would still be seeking help from teachers in order to be successful in their core academic experience. So I think those things that you're describing right now are still very possible. We're just making it very clear in no uncertain terms that we need those kinds of consistent separations there, and that this can't be the situation where it relates back to the core academic experience for the student.
Right. Okay. I just needed a little clarification on, on that. So those are my questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Newmaster. Thompson, did you have a question?
I did. I'm on Policy 806. I guess this is more going to be a comment type question on our crisis management policy. I noticed there's lots of things that have to go into the creation of these different crises that could come up in the district, and many of them, I would imagine, would involve some sort of alert system to the staff and students and buildings. And my concern is that I see slight mention of hearing impaired individuals, but I don't see any thing that really relates, and this is something that I have been curious about for a few years, is, as an example, say we have a staff member who isn't in class at this moment, they have an hour free or whatever, and they're in the restroom, and an alarm goes off in that restroom, there would be no way of alerting them that there is a crisis or something that they need to be aware of. Is there, are we working on this? Is this implementation going to happen? I was even now kind of going, darn it, I didn't bring these up when we've talked about our buildings and the works that we're doing in them. If we are thinking of, you know, is there a system we can put in place that would allow that staff member or individual student, or whoever it is in our building, to know something is happening and you need to be aware?
Yeah, I would say we've, we've worked with a lot of different strategies on trying to support deaf students and staff in those situations. There's no foolproof or fail-proof strategy to make that, to make that work, other than being aware of, if a, if a teacher has passed a student to the restroom and an alarm goes off, for them to notify someone that a student, a deaf student is in the restroom.
And if it's the staff member who is, like, I mean, I know there are, at least I remember in North Campus, I believe, that there were restrooms that were just for staff. What, how, you know, I mean, and I don't know what the system is. Is there a, something they can wear on their wrist that would vibrate or, or something? We're just, is this something that we could possibly, are we considering this? And, you know, I mean, we can talk about it, you know, just something that, as I was reading through it, I was thinking about that.
Yeah, I appreciate that. We've had conversations with one deaf staff member quite a bit to find a system that would work best for him. And we've tried multiple systems, and we continue to work with that individual on what works for him.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Boyd?
I got my question answered.
Okay. Other questions or comments regarding these? So with that, these will be before us next month for their second and final reading. We will now move into our first operational item, which is E1, which is Action on the Resolution Canvassing Returns of Votes of the School District General Election. Is this?
I'll, I'll take it.
All right. Dr. Kazmercheck.
Thanks, Chair Mullen, members of the board. The Minnesota statute requires that school districts adopt a resolution canvassing returns of votes of school district special and general elections between the 3rd and 10th day following the date of the election. The district's election attorney, Mr. Peter Martin of Kennedy and Graven, provided the necessary documents for this resolution, and the results of the election were provided by Mr. Dave Triplet, Ramsey County Elections Manager. So the recommended action is to approve the resolution canvassing returns of votes of the school district general election.
Thank you, Dr. Kazmercheck. You've heard the recommended action. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution? So moved. There's been a motion by Mr. Chapman. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Dr. Newmaster. Any discussion regarding the resolution? Hearing or seeing none, this will require a roll call vote. Would ask clerk to please read the roll.
Arcand?
Aye.
Bellloyd?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison? Aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
All right, and the motion passes. We will now move into our sex, second operational item, excuse me, E2, Action on the Resolution Authorizing Insurance of Certification, Search Certificates, excuse me, of the election and directing the school district clerk to perform other election-related duties. Is this also you, Dr. Kazmercheck?
Thanks, Chair Mullen, members of the board. The resolution authorizing issuance of certificates of election and directing the school district clerk to perform other election-related duties has been provided by the district's election attorney, Mr. Peter Martin of Kennedy and Graven. So our recommended action this evening is to approve the resolution authorizing issuance of certificates of election and directing the school district clerk to perform other election-related duties.
You've heard the recommended action. Is there a motion to adopt the recommended action?
So moved.
There's been a motion by Ms. Bellloyd. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Thompson. Any discussion regarding the recommended action? Hearing or seeing none, all those in favor of the recommended action, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Thank you. We now move into E3, Action on the Resolution Designating Polling Precincts Locations for the 2022 election.
I'll, I'll take this one too, Tim, if you won't mind, and if, if need be, Tim can help out here, so I'll, I'll just jump in. So Minnesota law requires the governing body of each school district to designate the locations of polling places for the following election year. It's now time for the school board to approve polling places for the 22 election year. And this is an annual approval item. It should ring a bell. You've all been around long enough to know that this is a recurring agenda item. So the recommended action is to approve the, I'm going to read the resolution, is to approve the resolution establishing polling places and combined polling places for certain municipal precincts and designating voting hours for school district elections not held on the day of a statewide election. So that's the, that's the recommended action, is to approve that resolution for the 22 state primary and general elections.
Thank you very much, Dr. Kazmercheck. You've heard the recommended action. Is there a motion to approve the recommended action?
So moved.
So moved by Dr. Arcand. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Chapman. Any discussion regarding the recommended action? Hearing or seeing none, this, all in favor of the recommended action, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Thank you very much. We will now move to our next operational item, E4, which is Action on the 2022-23 Secondary Course Proposals. Dr. Gillespie?
Chair Mullen, members of the board, student representative Tessa Mon, Dr. Kazmercheck.
session, and Director Babish, who is with her kids tonight at a soccer banquet, I believe. So I'm going to provide a summary of our secondary course proposals. As you know, we bring these to you every single year with either course name updates, recommendations, because we've worked with our industry partners around career pathway improvements, post-secondary partner updates, and then improvements based on what students give us feedback around enrollment, what we might need to stop and start in our course proposals. So this year, we have some updates to names. We tried to have a few names that are clear for our students to understand what courses they are. So we are recommending that businessology change to business applications, it's a 912 course, and it's a semester-long course. Music enrichment to general music, sixth grade course, and it's a full year. Writing studio, it's a CIS course to university writing, which aligns with the University of Minnesota course name. And then critical reading and thinking to Reading 1000, reading across the curriculum, and that aligns with Century College and their course names. Derek Desher came and talked to us about his recommendation in the department as he worked with our industry partners of changing motorsports, which is currently a full-year course, to power sports, to better align with industry, continue to give our students more options, and engage in our course, our automotive career pathway, and change that from to an 11, 12 class and only a semester. We will be delaying moving to sixth grade earth science one more year. We were given more room on implementation of new standards, and it'll allow our teachers to have more time with professional development. So we wanted to make sure that you were aware of that. American Sign Language will be offered. We'd like to offer it along with our other world languages in eighth grade for a full year. Recall that students earn high school credit in that eighth grade year. And then finally, adding advanced placement 3D studio portfolio to students for their options in art, which would continue to provide students with multiple opportunities and portfolio opportunities in our art courses, and we look forward to continuing to look at different ways to enhance art in a pathway, as if you remember our conversation a few weeks ago. So we have a recommendation to approve the courses. I can answer any questions if you have other ones from what we talked about, but we had a lot of conversation at the work-study session.
Thank you very much, Dr. Gillespie. I think before we get to questions, why don't we get a motion or ask for a motion to recommend, for the recommendation, which is to approve the recommended secondary course proposals for the 2022-2023 school year as presented. Is there a motion to approve those?
So moved.
There's been a motion by Dr. Newmaster. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Bellroyd. Any discussion regarding the recommended proposal of courses? Hearing or seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will now move into our next operational item, E5, which is the action on the acceptance of the Ryan Art Grants. Is that you, Dr. Kazmercheck?
I'll take that. Chair Mullen, members of the board, the White Bear Lake Area Educational Foundation has approved four 2022 Ryan Art Grant Proposals with a request that these grants be formally accepted by the, by the school district. So the four grants, the first one, titled Rock Out With Kindness and Joy at Lake Ayers, Stacy Bratt submitted that proposal. The second one, Art Supplies For The Classroom, Beth England at Onika. The next, Forever Keepsakes Of Love, Jennifer Elias at Lake Ayers, and I've Got Talent, I've got Allison Davies, Shannon Sullivan, Kelly Kura, and Jen Rickinger at Metosca International. So those are the four grants, and so the recommended action is to accept the Ryan Art Grants totaling $1,503.16 from the White Bear Lake Area Education Foundation. And I'd like to add just our gratitude for the foundation as they continue to support us in so many different ways. So that's the recommended action. I guess I add a little too much to the recommendation, I suppose. The recommendation is to accept the Ryan Art Grants totaling $1,503.16 from the White Bear Lake Area Education Foundation.
Thank you very much, Dr. Kazmercheck. Is there a motion to accept, to the, to approve the recommended action?
So moved.
There's been a motion by Mr. Chapman. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Ellison. Any discussion regarding the recommended action? Hearing or seeing none, this has financial implications, so we'll need a roll call vote. Would ask the clerk to please read the roll.
Arcand?
Aye.
Bellroyd?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison, aye.
Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
All right, and the motion passes. Thank you very much. We'll now move to our sixth agenda item, which is action on the resolution ratifying the sale of the 2021B Alternative Facilities Refinancing Bonds. Mr. Wald?
Thank you, Chair Mullen. Earlier this evening, Greg Crowe, senior municipal advisor from Ellers Incorporated, reported on the sale of the 2021B Alternative Facilities Refunding Bonds that occurred on November 3rd. The sale exceeded the parameters the board set for the conditions of that sale and will result in a savings of $286,543 for district taxpayers. The recommendation is for the board to approve the resolution ratifying the sale of general obligation alternative facilities refunding bonds, Series 2021B, in the original aggregate principal amount of $8,280,000.
Thank you, Mr. Wald. You've heard the recommended action. Is there a motion to approve it?
So moved.
There's been a motion by Ms. Bellroyd. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Dr. Newmaster. Any discussion? Hearing or seeing none, this will require a roll call vote, but ask the clerk to please read the roll.
Arcand?
Aye.
Bellroyd?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison, aye.
Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Thank you very much. Excuse me. We'll now move to our seventh agenda item, which is the action on the health insurance rates. Mr. Mons, is this you?
It is indeed. Welcome.
Thank you very much, Chair Mullen, members of the board. Tonight, I'd like to start out before making the recommendation just with a thank you to the Insurance Committee, because as glamorous as that may sound to all of you, monthly attendance at our Insurance Committee meetings is greatly appreciated, and we have a very engaged committee, and I'm really thankful for that, and excellent partners in One Digital, and then with all of our labor leaders and employee participants that come to the table. So that's greatly appreciated. The recommendation from the committee is, you can see in your board pack, a 3% increase in both the HRA and HSA plans and a 7% increase in the traditional co-pay plan, which is utilized by very few participants in the district at this point. Additionally, we're coming to the board with a 2% increase in our dental insurance rates this year. As always, with our health insurance, what our goal is in terms of making a rate recommendation is to see that we're continuing to build our reserve in a healthy fashion and that our reserve continues to build towards essentially six months or 50% of a plan year. And so with that, we kind of understand the ebbs and flows, you know, we build that reserve so that in the year or years that we would have unusual, unusually high claim spend, that we're able to weather those and then that we can build in years where we're having lower claim spend. So we're certainly taking, you know, our experience through these last couple of years with, you know, how the pandemic has changed employees accessing healthcare into account as we've been making these decisions and recommendations. So with that, you have the recommendation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mons. You've heard the recommended action. Is there a motion to approve the recommended action?
So moved.
There's been a motion by Ms. Ellison. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Bellroyd. Is there any discussion regarding the recommended action? Hearing or seeing none, this will require a roll call vote. Would ask the clerk to read the roll.
Arcand?
Aye.
Bellroyd?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison, aye.
Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Thank you very much, and the motion passes.
Thank you.
Well, our last agenda item for the evening, for the, excuse me, for our last operational item, E8, which is the action on school board policy 514, bullying prevention. This is our second reading, so would ask if there is a motion to approve policy 514 as revised.
So moved.
There's been a motion by Ms. Bellroyd. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second by Dr. Arcand. Any discussion regarding the policy? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, and the motion passes, and the policy is revised. We are now at the point of our meeting. It is board forum. Does anybody have anything for board forum this evening? Ms. Thompson?
I would just like to recognize that it's the Native American Heritage Month, and on this Thursday at Otter Lake Elementary, there will be another drum and dance event held by our APAC group, and it'll be from 6:00 to 7:00 through 3:00 p.m. There will be light refreshments provided. I hope everybody can come and attend.
What time is that?
What?
6:00 p.m. starts and goes until 7:30.
I'm sorry, what, what date?
This Thursday.
Oh, this Thursday.
This Thursday, yep, at Otter Lake Elementary, and you can enter through door A. And then I was going to do a land acknowledgement tonight, but after doing some research, I am not qualified to do a land acknowledgement without consulting with tribal affiliate, you know, tribal members who would have been part of this land before we were here. I do acknowledge that we are on land of our ancestral tribal peoples and would hope to work with them to do a proper land acknowledgement in the future.
All right. Anybody else have anything for board forum? Dr. Newmaster?
Mentioned that I know I'm attending the Veterans Day special event at Normandy, and it looks like it'll be very interesting. I hope it's very well attended, and it'll help us remember, as we drive around the state, different places that acknowledge sacrifices people have made. And I know when I did my tour with the wreaths, I saw Union Cemetery has the acknowledgement of the Native Americans who were relocated there. And I always think of that because there is a specific part of that cemetery that has the figures, mementos, things like that. But it is a kind of a sober thing when you look at the different acknowledgements, and I think this tour and the author of the photo journey that we can take Thursday morning should be an interesting thing if you've got the time to come.
Thank you very much, Dr. Newmaster. Anybody else under board forum? With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move for an adjournment.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion by Dr. Arcand, a second by Ms. Bellroyd. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.